Pinchan, our new commissioners' first meeting, so welcome. We'll start with the roll call.
Great. Commissioner Chan?
Present.
Commissioner Donagro?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Wong?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Quake?
You're here.
And Chair Davis?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody's here. Terrific. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have no minutes to approve. We're up to public communications now. This is a time set aside in the meeting for any member of the public to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda tonight, but within our purview. Do we have anybody? I'm looking at the attendees. I don't see any hands raised.
No hands.
We'll wait five more seconds, just in case. Okay, we'll move on then to the public hearing. This is for 863 Pinon Avenue. It is a public hearing to consider a design review permit to allow a first and second story addition of a single-family residence located at 863 Pinon Ave. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. This is Sam Fielding, Senior Planner with the City of Millbrae. Before I start, I just wanted to provide a quick update. Staff uploaded the neighbor consultation form for 855 Pinon Ave, who is part of the project. It's uploaded to our website. And staff's analysis of the property owner's concerns is included in the staff report and in the presentation that I'll be providing this evening. And so I will be sharing the screen. Are people able to see the screen? Do people see the screen?
Yeah, we're not seeing the presentation mode.
Oh, you're not? Okay, all right. Let me reload. Let me open that again. Are you seeing it now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, so this is the project located for at 863 Pinon Avenue for design review permit 2021-97. Good evening, Chair Davis and Planning Commissioners. My name is Sam Fielding, Senior Planner in the Planning Division of Community Development Department, and I'll be presenting the planning application for 863 Pinon Avenue this evening. After the presentation, I'm available to answer questions. I'm also joined by Roscoe Mata, the Planning Manager, and the project property owners Freeman Pang and Carissa Lu, and the project architect Jack Chu, who are available to answer questions. After the staff presentation, the project applicant will give a brief presentation about the project. The request is the request this evening is for a design review permit to allow a first and second story addition of a single-family residence. The project is located in the Mills Estate subdivision on the south side of Pinon Avenue between Marcela Way and Sequoia Avenue within the single-family residential R1 zone, low-density residential designation of the general plan. This slide shows the project site photos from the south to north along Pinon Avenue. The project site is circled here in photo number three. 855 Pinon Avenue is in photo number four on the left side of the house. The applicant is requesting approval of a design review permit for first and second story addition in a single-family residence to include seven bedrooms, six bathrooms, and one-half bathroom with an existing detached two-car garage. The floor area ratio will increase from 2,190 square feet to 4,550 square feet. It's representing 26% FAR and 54% FAR for the new residence. This slide shows the existing floor plan and the proposed first floor plan. And then the the second floor is highlighted here is darkened in the in the sheet here for the proposed site. Also, it also indicates the roof plan. These are the existing and proposed first floor plans. The addition to the back, you can notice here, you can see it in the back under the proposed site. This is the proposed second floor with the bedrooms, closets, and a bathroom and the main bedroom at the rear. There's also two bathrooms for these front bedrooms. This is the existing and proposed front elevation. Existing and proposed northeast left-side elevation. Existing imposed southwest right-side elevation. There's a side door that the applicant is proposing for this project. And this is the existing and proposed southeast rear elevation. This is the proposed roof plan. This slide shows a proposed first floor with a 612 slope hip-type shingle roof and a second floor with a 412 slope hip-type shingle roof. There's one new skylight on the first floor and two new skylights on the second floor. The proposed exterior first and second floor wall finishes will be brown earth tone shadow cliff stucco with light brown Malibu beige color for the eaves trim, window and door trim and front door color. The rear detached garage will be beige white color, so it's coffee, and a brick veneer will be added around the base of the home. The proposed project will retain all of the existing trees and landscaping, landscaping, which includes 19 total trees, including 10 trees in the front yard consisting of King Kong olive, Japanese maple, plum blossom, and orange trees. There's also five existing trees located adjacent to 855 Pinon Avenue. To evaluate 855 Pinon Avenue property owner concerns, staff requested that the applicant provide a privacy window study and solar access study for the project. And I wanted to mention that this was part of the neighbor consultation, so the applicant did consult, send out neighbor consultation forms to seven property owners. Six property owners did not respond, and then, as was mentioned, the one property owner, 855 Pinon Avenue, responded opposed to the project, expressing concerns regarding the new windows facing her house and the overall size of the proposed house. Staff requested the applicant provide a privacy window study to evaluate the adjacent neighbor neighbors' concerns at 855 Pinon Avenue regarding the new window windows' impact on her privacy from the proposed project. This slide shows the window viewing angles into the two adjacent properties from the proposed project for both the ground floor and the second floor. 855 Pinon Avenue is located to the left. As can be seen in the diagrams, the view from the first floor is primarily blocked by the existing fence. The view from the second floor is at a steep angle, and the view is only in a narrow band between the top of the fence and the roof ridge of 855 Pinon Avenue. Most of the view from the second floor will be of the rooftop of the adjacent residence. Staff office research indicated that the view from the proposed second floor at the subject property would primarily only impact two centrally located windows on the south side of 855 Pinon Avenue, but not the other windows, because the view would look down primarily on the rooftops of 855 Pinon Avenue. This aerial photo shows the the two windows located at 855 Pinon Avenue directly adjacent to the subject property. This is the privacy window study facing 855 Pinon Avenue and facing 865 Pinon Avenue. On the side facing 855 Pinon Avenue, there is a ground floor porch and a door and a window that looks indirectly directly across from the two adjacent windows. Staff highlighted the the window locations of 855 Pinon Avenue, and these are in blue. Based on the review of the privacy study impact to 855 Pinon Avenue, staff believes the privacy impacts will be minimal for the following reasons. The the privacy window study shows that the windows at 855 Pinon Avenue do not directly align with the proposed new windows at the subject property. The properties are also separated by a six-foot-tall fence, which will directly block views into any windows located on the ground floor of either property. Three, the foliage of the five trees located on the south side of 863 Pinon facing 855 Pinon Avenue will also partially block views from the first and second floor into the windows of 855 Pinon Avenue. And four, from the second floor, the upper-floor windows will primarily look down on the rooftop of 855 Pinon Avenue, not into windows directly. Only the two central square windows of 855 Pinon will be available, will be viewable from the second floor, but this will be from a steep angle, as was shown on Slide 18. Finally, the windows on the first floor are located approximately 21 to 29 feet away from the exterior wall windows of the adjacent home, and from the second floor, they are approximately 21 to 25 feet away from the adjacent home's windows. To address the adjacent property owners' concerns regarding the proposed height and bulk of the project, staff requested the applicant provide a solar study to evaluate the adjacent neighbors' concerns. The solar access study evaluated the worst-case shadow blockage conditions during the summer and winter for both existing condition and the proposed condition. The methodology used was a to-scale 3D model with and without the proposed addition with software depicting the solar elevation and azimuth at different seasons. The solar access study evaluated the existing condition, worst-case blockage of morning, midday, and afternoon sunlight on abutting properties during June, summer, and December winter that would result from the proposed development. The study indicates that for the existing condition, the only period when there is some shadow impact on 855 Pinon was an 18% shadow at 3:00 p.m. during the winter month of December. During the winter month, worst-case blockage of sunlight, there were shadow impacts of 8% in the morning, 19% at midday, and 48% at 3:00 p.m. during the month of December. The model indicates that there was no significant impact of shadows for the proposed project during the summer months and minimal impact during the winter month of December. Staff believes that there is a less than significant shadow impact to the adjacent neighbor at 855 Pinon Ave from the proposed two-story addition. There were no shadow impacts on the on the other adjacent property owners. Based on a review of the plans, privacy study, application materials, and site visit to the property, staff's opinion is the proposed project will not have a significant impact on the privacy of the adjacent neighbor at 855 Pinon Avenue. And for the solar access study, based on the staff review of the plans and evaluation of the solar access study, staff determined that the proposed project will have no shadow impacts at 855 Pinon during the summer months and a less than significant shadow impact during the winter months, worst-case shadows. Pursuant to Section 10.05.2500(c) point two of the Millbrae Municipal Code, the design review application materials shall be evaluated by the planning commission. The following findings are required to be met for the planning commission to approve the requested design review permit. Staff determined, based on the review of the project plans and the Millbrae Municipal Code Development Standards for the Single Family Residential R1 Zone, that the proposed project meets the design review permit findings required for approval as referenced in the project packet, Attachment One, Resolution Adopting Design Review Permit Findings. Staff completed environmental review of the proposed project and determined that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15303 Class 1E2 of CEQA that allows for an addition to an existing structure that would not result in an increase of more than 10,000 square feet. At this time, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project by making the following motion: Adopt a resolution to allow a first and second story addition to a single-family residence located at 863 Pinon Avenue based on the findings for approval in Attachment One and subject to the conditions of approval in Attachment One, Exhibit A. This concludes the presentation. Staff, the project applicant, and the property owner is available to answer questions about the proposed project.
Thank you, Sam. Do any commissioners have any clarifying questions for Sam right now? Kathy?
Thank you. Please refresh my memory. I thought that although you addressed it and it says that there isn't, I remember something that said that the garage parking had to do with the amount of bedrooms. Does anybody remember that? Sam?
The, sorry, can you repeat the question?
Okay.
You have, you
That we had for some period of time, we were going back and forth on how to gauge if we needed a third parking spot. And with that being said, we've got a non-conforming garage. I can see there's parking available going in, but can you refresh my memory on the need for a third garage space?
Well, this, it is a conforming garage. They do have a detached two-car garage
Right.
in the rear of the lot. That's what our development standards require for our one single-family residential is a two-car garage. We don't have anything in our code that that requires a three-car garage. If the if the project has a two-car garage, then it's meeting our development standard. I know there was, I guess, in the past, some discussion about, you know, surface parking and, you know, can surface parking be provided? But the city also has in our development code the front yard landscaping requirement, which allows a maximum 40% paved surface and and requires at least 60% to be landscaped. So there in the past, there had been some proposals about, you know, in the front yard paving, creating some paving space for a third surface space, but that would not, that that typically does not meet our front yard landscaping requirement. Yeah, so so the the development standard is for our one single-family residential two-car garage is required.
Okay, thank you. I do remember having right, you know, required people to put in a third garage based on bedrooms. Now, that might have changed. Whatever. If you're saying it isn't, it isn't. I should have probably looked into it, but that's kind of what I remembered in seven bedrooms is a lot of people in the house. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Alan?
Yes, I noticed on the drawings, like the solar study, the drawing was dated in January 2021, and then the outreach forms were dated June 2021. It seems like this outreach was then conducted quite a bit a time ago. Has there been a lot of changes to the plans, or is there a need for further outreach? Has there been more discussions with the neighbors and review during this period? I want to make sure that all the deliverables have been timely and the public and make sure they have a chance to review the latest.
Yes. Yeah, I can respond to that. The the changes were were minor changes mainly to the exterior facade of the building, exterior materials, the size of the side door. But there were no significant changes to the plans from when the application first came in and when the the certified, or when the when the applicant sent out the neighbor consultation forms. Staff did not receive, you know, any comments from from the adjacent property owners or like any contact from them other than 855 Pinon Ave.
Have there been any further meetings with the neighbors? I noticed because there was only one response.
Yes, I reached out to the applicant several times throughout the review period to have him give me an update if he had gotten any response from the neighbors, you know, if they had attempted to contact the neighbors in person. And the the applicant informed me that that they had they had not received any any responses from the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, can we hear from the applicants?
So, Jack Chu, I'm promoting you to panelist. You just need to accept the request. Oh, there it goes.
I'm the applicant, architect representative's case. We actually sent out twice the notice to the neighbor via US Mail, certified mail to the to the neighbor in different period, within three months period. We did it twice notification to the to the neighbor and waiting for them to respond to us. Obviously, no one cared except at the 855, the lady, the young lady called me talking about the second story addition. Other than that, no one, no, I don't see the the neighbor care about our second story addition. That's why, that's why it take a time, because the solar study was done almost a year ago. And the outside process, we are making micro, minor adjust of the color. And I think that's it. You have anything you want to say?
No, it's more or less like that, yeah.
Thank you. Do you want to present the project to us at all? You want to share more details?
I think it's mostly Sam done a great job. The presentation tells a lot about the architect and about the building, about the shadow, about all that different things, and I appreciate all the efforts and to make this happen. For me, what I want to say is that I do have a big family, and my wife also have his, have her side of the senior and my have my side of senior. Our our house now is, I mean, the the livable area, I believe, is like around 1,800 or something. We have a lot of fight all this time, especially walk at home and all the cops stuff, so it's very heavy. It's a long way, so I I am looking forward really and, you know, to have a comfortable space for myself and for my family. My eldest son just graduated and also get an offer back over here. Based on the situation, I don't believe she can afford to rent or buy a house and anytime soon, so that that definitely help us to solve a big problem. So I appreciate all the all the work and, yeah, it's not easy to come to this stage. So possibly that's about that.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any clarifying questions for the architect or the applicants? Not right now? Already then, does the public have anything to say? Are any attendees wanting to say anything?
We do have a couple of hands.
Okay.
So we'll start with, I'll just go in order of the hand. So Joyce Tesoto, if you will come off mute, and I'll go ahead and share the timer.
Did I unmute myself?
Perfect, yes.
Okay, um, I, the side of my house is on Kenyon and Ashton is the front of my house, and I did get a card. And I just wanted to know, it's like they're putting a two-story house in the middle of no two-story houses. And it's such a large house. I'm going seven bedrooms and five bathrooms. I'm going, what you're saying is a lot of people are coming to live here. And I'm just thinking, are we doing, you know, opening it to, you know, people coming and going? It's pretty hard to understand that a family that large is going to be living here, and where is everybody going to park? And I'm I'm laughing at the concern of the landscaping when no one waters their lawns and hardly on Pinon. And, you know, most of the stuff is dead, and I'm going, it's okay to build these huge homes? I'm very, yeah, I've been here for 42 years, so it's, it's, it worries me. So is this approved or it has not been approved?
So this is the meeting where it would be approved or not approved, but we also can't answer questions during the public comment part. But it has not yet been approved.
Oh.
Okay?
So then it doesn't matter what I say, right?
That's not what I said at all. That's why we have
gets approved. So when it gets approved, then what what can you say?
Do you have any more comments to add?
I guess not, since you can't answer anything.
Okay, thank you. Chrissy, is there anybody else?
Yes, Shirley, if you will come off mute. There you go.
Oh, that's me.
Yes, that's you. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, hi. Yeah, I'm Shirley, our next-door neighbor of Mr. Penn, 865 Pinon. And we did talk to Mr. Penn about it, and the right now, I hear the the seven bedrooms and the concern I have, this will be, they do have two adult kids, and I do, the only thing is, the concern is about the, this is a big house, we have a two, two parking garage, and this is And, uh, this is, uh, uh, as you know, Pinon is a small street. The only thing is, uh, you know, I, uh, yeah, the concern about the parking and, uh, uh, potentially many people in and out. And, uh, you know, so the, the concern about the, the zoning, this is, uh, you know, suitable for like a seven bedroom and, uh, two garage. That's it.
Thank you very much. Christie, is there anybody else?
None at this time. Those are the only two hands.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to close the public comment?
Sure, I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Heard one.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a vote?
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Donagro?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Quake?
Yes.
And Chair Davis?
Yes.
Thank you. Public comment is closed.
Right, thank you. All right, are we ready for discussion? Let's go first. Kathy, is your hand really up or was that leftover from the past?
It was leftover from the other one.
Alrighty then, who'd like to kick it off? Kathy?
I do have a comment to make. Um, the background for the architect, that house is lovely. I don't know where it is, but it's a lovely.
It's burning again. Uh, that's the house I designed, uh, just finished two months ago.
It's very nice.
Thank you.
I can go ahead and ask some questions if nobody else is wanting to step up.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, so, um, first of all, is there is a two-story house on Ashton? I will point out at eighteen oh eight Ashton, it's just around the block. It is the only two-story house I could find that was around it. Um, so it is very unusual to have a two-story in this area. That doesn't make it impossible to go this two-story. It is a very large house compared to every house around it. I mean, it's nearly double the size of every house in the neighborhood. Um, that concerns me a bit. Um, but at the same time, you know, I think, you know, your need and your desire to build, it's within the ratios of what's allowable. Um, I don't think, you know, that's a reason to stop you from doing so. However, I do have some issues, um, that I like to ask a little bit about. One, I would start off with a, a basic question, which is the rendering of the house shows a very large, steep roof on the second story. Yet, when you look at the elevations, it doesn't appear to be as large and steep of a roof. So I'm looking at page thirty-nine versus all the elevations. Is the roof on the second story as big as it's shown in, in page thirty-nine? Sam, can you pull up page thirty-nine for me? Of the document?
Uh, are you talking about in the presentation?
Yeah, in, well, I'm talking about in the actual document we got sent for the.
Oh, and the staff report?
It's the rendering. It shows the color of the house and, and the browns and the, the brickwork. Um, I mean, the top of this house looks like a, looks like a farmhouse almost as far as how tall it is. That concerned me greatly when I saw how, how big and how much mass that generates from the look of it.
Yeah, I can share that.
I'm looking at that second story there. Um, is that deceptive? Is that wrong? I mean, I'm, I'm rather concerned about how tall this house looks, how tall heavy it looks because of how tall that roof is shown there.
Yeah.
The pitch of that roof and the pitch of the roof underneath it, are they the same pitch?
No, I mean, they're different, they're different, uh, roof pitches. I mean, I ca- I, I probably would defer to the architect to explain the rendering, um, but the, the, there is two, uh, roof, different roof pitches. Um, the first floor has a, has a six twelve slope and then the second floor has a four twelve slope. According to the plans.
So it rises four feet for every twelve feet, is that right? For a four twelve, that's what a four twelve is. Right? If the first story rises six feet for every twelve feet, so the, the first floor is actually steeper.
Yeah.
All right, so this, this picture is clearly deceptive. All right, um, I guess I'm gonna rely on the elevations to dictate the roof pitch because those numbers don't add up for this image. Um, second is, um, well, I'll talk about the, the trees for a second here. Um, first of all, bamboo's not a tree. Um, it's a tree-like, but it's still bush. Um, it's actually middle time. I wouldn't count it on a tree count. Um, but the trees that you have between the two windows are deciduous, both the plum and cherry. Um, half the year during the winter months have no leaves on them at all. So they're not really privacy barriers for part of the year. Um, I, I, I would find that to be not acceptable if you're trying to use them as justification for maintaining privacy. Um, so I, I'm bothered by that. Um, I would suggest that, um, if this was really the way we were moving forward with, with generating privacy, something else has to be done. I wanted to point, point that out as far as them being deciduous. Um, I'd like to ask a question about why the door on the northeast side. Um, you're creating a new circulation, new people going around that side of the house between two narrow homes, not near a driveway. You're creating a whole new traffic pattern of people that are in close proximity to somebody else's home. And I don't, I don't see a demand or a need for a, a door on the side of a bedroom between two houses in the close proximity. So I'd like to understand the rationale for why that door and that porch are there. That's a question to the applicant.
Uh, Ja- Jack, did you want to answer that question?
Um, first thing first, the, uh, the rendering is actually is not correct. It's not being updated. Uh, we don't have a door next to the primary office. That door has been taken out. Uh, the front entrance door states, but the side door from the, uh, rest, right-hand side is gonna be closed. We're not changing that, we're not changing that window at all, so shouldn't be a door there. Uh, secondly, is regarding the second floor roof pitch, uh, the rendering is not correct. Uh, seems like the second floor roof pitch on is morning six twelve. It should be four twelve slope, so my elevation will be the correct, correct, uh, drawings. The rendering is way off.
Between the ha- between this house and eight six three and the house and eight five five, you're adding a new door. Yes or no?
Hmm, uh, there's a, there's a side door, that's a.
On the left side of the house.
Yeah, primary, uh.
I'm asking, what's the rationale for adding a new door with a porch in the narrow gap between those two homes?
Because the client, uh, client has a, uh, elderly, uh, mom, uh, like to, uh, have fresh air go out. That's why, uh, is that's why they, they, they demand to have added door there. We can always take, we can, we can close it, no problem. And just change to window.
Yeah, I'm a little bothered by the door as far as, you know, you're, you're talking about neighbors already sensitive to the privacy situation. Now you're creating circulation to that side of the house. That's another demand on them and I, I think that, you know, that, that neighbor may appreciate a compromise, at least on that level.
Okay, okay.
So thank you for the feedback.
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, this is the owner of the house, the epic as well. You're talking about that door, what, uh, create, uh, circulation? Okay, I have all parents. My wife have all, uh, parents. I am getting old too. So from time to time downstairs, why we design like this? We also want to go out, have a fresh of, uh, uh, air, uh, see the green a little bit, have a cup of coffee, have a cup of tea. So what's wrong with that then?
You want to use the porch on that side more often. You want to create a sort of place for, to, to reside in, to be for more time.
So.
Okay. I, I just want to understand your motivations for, for changing the dynamic of people, locations and proximity to a house. Uh, that does create more noise on that side of the home for the neighbor next to you. Um, you know, it's, these are, these are things that neighbors get worried about. And so I'm asking the question as legitimate concern about the neighbor next to you.
I explained the reason already.
I understand. I hear you. Thank you for telling me. Um, the stairwell that's above that, um, that, the second story, have you considered doing some reclivity window, some clustery windows or anything, um, along that side, at least for primary bedroom one? I know primary bedroom three couldn't because it's the only windows for the room. But in primary bedroom one on the second story, yeah, I guess you can find the rendering here. The back bedroom in the corner there.
One of commissioners. So the bedroom, bedroom.
Second story, please. Is this the second story?
Story bedroom one, those two window need to be, one of the window need to be requests.
You have a rear window that's, yeah, okay.
The, the rear primary bedroom two, those two window, we can make a obscure or high window for many, many for sunlight coming in from the side.
So that's what I'm, I guess, and that's great to hear because that's what I'm getting at is that on that privacy concern, some of the things you can do for a neighbor and help project get through is to elevate the window so that somebody standing can't see directly down in somebody's, um, bedroom.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, primary bedroom number, what is the one up front there that's next to the, below the stairwell here in this rendering? Is that number, I can't see the numbers if you can zoom in, maybe that would help. There's a little plot, yeah, there you are. So primary bedroom one, it only has two windows and those two windows face outward. You couldn't do clustery windows there just simply for safety's sake. There has to be an escapable window, I assume.
Yes.
Right? So those couldn't go clustery, but the primary bedroom, uh, in the very back three has the big back window and it has two side windows could, could go clustery.
Yes.
And of course, the stairwell does not need a escape window either.
The stairwell, though.
Yeah.
High up.
Yeah, so my point is, is that, you know, you might want to consider with your neighbor, a, a compromise and a help is to take some of those windows and make them elevated. Um, that may help, you know, um, ease the, the concerns. Uh, I always think of that as, as a good compromise and a good help.
Okay.
All right, um, renderings, the trees, the roof. Would you consider planting some non-deciduous trees in place of that plum and that cherry?
Like a, like an Italian cypress, those kind of tree, but Italian cypress create shadow line. Because they can go up to like twenty feet high.
Yeah, you'd want to plant something that's not so tall, but same time, it basically keeps leaves.
Uh, that kind of screen.
Yeah, uh, uh, for that gentleman. So I, I have no problem to discuss with the labor, what kind of tree to plant over there, which is benefit for both of us. So I don't have, I don't have any, I mean, you know, like, like any idea to develop if, uh, regarding about what tree, you know, workable.
Okay. All right, so I, I've mentioned three things that I think may help you with your neighbor. Um, one is the clustery window options. The second one is the tree changes. And the third one is, is maybe consider the, um, compromise of removing the door and the porch that's in such proximity to their house. So, you know, obviously, you know, I don't, you know, have a, a, a demand of you at this point. Um, seeing how palpable and how willing you are to compromise is important to me. Um, and, and of course, it's important to your neighbor for the long-term relationship. Um, and I, I guess I'll, I'll relinquish, um, my questions right now and let other commissioners step in. Thank you to the chair.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next? Alan?
Sure, I'll go next. Okay, so, um, it is very large house. Um, it meets the design codes for the city of Mill Gray, so it's all within uh, the size requirements for square footage and, um, FAR and setbacks, second story setbacks, side setbacks, everything meets code. So appreciate the design and the owner for keeping within code. Uh, given that it, it is very large, it's noticeably large. Every time we have these, um, remodels and people want to upsize their house, I take it as an opportunity for our community to update our homes and, and make it a better place to live and uh, add more updated design elements. And right now, we don't have the family home guidelines, but the city's in the process of developing single-family home guidelines. And there's some elements of this design that I think it could use a lot of improvements that would add a lot to the neighborhood. Uh, first and foremost, addressing the size of the home, as Commissioner Del Negro noted. Second story is very bulky, very massive. And it's almost bigger in size appearance on the rendering than the first floor. And so it almost becomes the top-heavy, uh, first floor. I know, uh, Jack, from your architectural design in the back, there's a lot more modern design elements, a lot more breaking up of the massing of that. Um, but we try to avoid in our, you know, the remodels to just look like it's like cake layer design where you just add a second story rectangle on top of the existing one. So anything that you can do to break up that massing and give it a less massive appearance, then that would help, uh, reduce the appearance that it's oversized for the neighborhood. Uh, examples might be, uh, window treatments. I think, uh, just, uh, breaking up the long flat wall, having different compartments. I notice if you shape the second story like the contour of the first story, the first story on the left side, it protrudes to the front of the house more so if you were able to bring out that, the top second story and have a compartment there that even comes out with, instead of a ten-foot second story front setback, like even fifty, smaller, I think it was, was it, uh, five or so, um, then that would break up the mass, but, uh, obviously, Jack, I see with your design in the background, you know, a lot of these designing elements that you could do and that it's missing in this design here. I think we need to look at the, uh, front, front of the house here. Um, Sam, if you can pull up the front.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah.
Um, and then on the initial rendering, it looked like it was off-centered to the right here. It looks like there's a little bit more, uh, the, the second story to the left. So, uh, the initial appearance on the initial rendering looked like it was off-centered. So the symmetry and the massing, it was just, uh, very bulky and massive, gave a cake-like appearance. Uh, there's more architectural details that you can add to break that up. I think in part, I think I noticed that there's the second story has nine-foot ceilings. So it's almost, looks like it's higher ceilings than the bottom floor so that, that anything you can do to even reduce the roof pitch to make it give a lower profile appearance on the second floor. That would help and then architectural treatments like shutters uh, on the second floor or railings or window framing or molding, anything you could do might help. You know, update this, this house and by updating the house, you update the neighborhood, update the community, uh, make it a lot more nicer for all the residents. Uh, so that's for architectural details. As far as, uh, the landscape, um, Joyce noted that, uh, people need to water the lawns, but instead of watering lawns, which we're supposed to conserve water now, if you have more drought-tolerant plants, native plants, uh, to, uh, you know, water conservation landscaping, that would help. A lot of the landscaping I see are like more Asian style trees, but maybe toss in some more natives. Uh, that would help and even if you have taller natives and, uh, the natives could, taller trees can help break up the massing too, so you, you less focus on the second story, big massive second story and not more focus on, uh, softer with the trees too. So, um, just overall, very large house. I would think that there's could be a lot more, you know, even small improvements that can be done to break up this massing and the scale and the size to give it a softer appearance, uh, as far as the other elements. When we looked at this, uh, houses this size, again, we look at the parking situation and the, uh, congestion that it may cause, but there's, uh, looks like there is two-car garage and plenty of parking on the side. Uh, so that's kind of addressed somewhat. Uh, but overall, it looks to me, it looks almost more like zoned R-three type building with the multi-unit apartment because of the big massing, but if we can bring it more into conformance like single-family house with more uh, architectural details and designs, I think it'll be a great addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Can I just get one clarification? The color rendering, you pretty much shouldn't look at it for anything but the colors. Is that correct? Because it is completely not to scale, not correct. Just look at it for colors.
Just for the color.
That's unfortunate. I wish we had a good color rendering, but we shouldn't look at it for design. Okay, alright, who's next?
Oh, just one other element too is that.
Go ahead, Alan.
The first store, the second story, two left windows, I guess for the bathroom, are they going to be glazed or frosted?
Those gonna be obscure, yeah.
Okay, so those smaller windows because they're for the bathroom, then it makes that second-story wall much more massive and flat also. So if there was something you could do, even make the windows larger, I know it's for the bathroom, but if they're obscured. Yeah, maybe that might help break up the massing there too.
Okay, thank you. Who's next? Kathy?
I really don't have anything more to really say. The comments that have been said are fabulous. I also looked at that top, but once again, when you look. At the drawings, they don't look quite as bad as the color rendering that is here. Um, so I, I have one more quick question then, so. The upper floor is nine feet and what is the lower floor? For. A first staff?
Yeah, the, the, you mean floor-to-ceiling height?
On the lower, yeah.
Yeah, on the lower floor, it's nine feet.
Okay, so it's nine and nine?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, it does look very top-heavy, but I also looked at the drawings and they didn't look quite as bad as the rendering here. You know, this is kind of a crazy question, but. It, uh, there's family rooms upstairs and family rooms downstairs. This almost could, and you've got such a large family, um, that maybe. An attached ADU might work out better. Um, I don't know if staff, uh, is in the neighborhood of saying things like that, but when you've got seven. Bedrooms, you are gonna have a lot, not only just children, but you're gonna have kind of split families. And, uh, my thought is maybe if this had been designed where there was like an ADU attached or something. Um, for, for, for the extra family that's involved. Uh, Sam, did you go over anything like this with them?
Um, so.
I mean.
Yeah.
Maybe it's something we should.
Yeah.
I could, I could, um, I can.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I could provide some insight. Um, so this is a, this application is discretionary application for the second story, um. Addition, um, it, it, because it's a discretionary discretionary application, um, an ADU. Could be a possibility in the future, um, but, uh, just so that. To make it clear for the commission, um, you know, the, the merits of this project are primarily the second story. It doesn't preclude an ADU in the future or a GADU, if that matters.
I'm sorry, so you said this is an application for a second story and what did you say about the ADU?
Uh, it does not preclude an ADU or a GADU in the future should the applicant, um. To, uh, decide to. To, um, propose one in the future.
So.
It would still have to meet our, our regulations, but it, um, um, it, it does not preclude.
Right, so that means that. They could add an ADU in the back as a separate or a junior ADU?
Uh, it's, it's a possibility. We'd have to take a look and we have to ensure that it meets our development regulations, but. Um, it, it is still something that could be added, um, later on.
Okay, I, I just, you know, when I see seven bedrooms, that must mean there's some. Different families involved and since, you know, there's the separate entrances and doors to come in and out, that it might have. Made sense and gotten the second little kitchen in there or something like that, but. I understand that is not what we're looking at. Uh. But it's just thoughts that come to my little brain. Thank you. Um, and, and once again, as comments, I, you know, I. Think it's just very large. I know it fits into all of the numbers that are there. And, uh, uh, hopefully, uh, the finished product won't look quite like this rendering. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask more question to the chair.
Sure, Chris, go ahead.
To the city staff, what is the required setback for a porch? On a home?
So, for the.
I'm looking at the, yeah, I'm looking at the city website and it says that's a serious consideration for any porch. This is five feet, one inch.
Right, uh. So for, it's at the, it's a, at a ground level, so. Uh, the setback, the five-foot setback is for, uh, the exterior wall, so an actual, uh, structure. So if the porch is, is under, uh, you know, it, if it's just a ground level, uh. Uh, porch, um. Um, I can, I can look that up there.
I'm reading the city's website for how large of a deck can I have and. It says that proximity to the pros deck neighboring homes is a potential impact upon privacy is a important consideration.
Sure.
Um, you know, and obviously it listed as at ground floor.
Yeah.
You know, um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm rather concerned at the proximity. This is five feet. From, from a fence line that is then, looks like five feet from the neighbor house or a short distance. And this is very close proximity to somebody's bedroom window having a new porch. I, I'm, I'm, I'm rather stuck on, on the proximity of this new door and this new porch on that side of the house. As a liability for the project.
Yeah, so our, our code states, uh, that, uh. Open uncovered raised porches, landings or outside steroids may project not closer than three feet to any interior side lot line. And not more than two feet into any required exterior side yard. Um, and not more than six feet into any required front or rear yard. So in this case, it would be, uh. A side lot line, so it can't project, uh, closer than three feet to any, um, interior side lot line.
So it's still within code?
Yes.
But still a major impact to the neighbors as far as privacy, having somebody less than ten feet sitting on a porch.
Um, yeah, I mean, there is a six-foot high fence, uh.
Understand.
There also, but, 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 yeah, the, the porch would be on the side.
It isn't at ground low, it is raised. I mean, they're showing two steps up onto the porch. Um, you know. I don't know how tall that porch is, but you know, you're not at ground elevation here.
Yeah.
Alright, I, back to the chair.
Thanks. Nathan, do you have any comments?
Well, I, um. I certainly, uh, sympathize, uh, with the applicant's desire to, um. Create livable space for multiple generations of his family, uh, given the. Uh, you know, how unaffordable it's become in our area. Um, it's, you know, fortunate that he has the resources and the space on his lot to be able to accommodate. And, you know, more and more families are being forced into this situation. Um, I actually was also, uh. Thinking of what, uh, uh, Commissioner Quigg mentioned in terms of why wasn't an ADU considered? It might be interesting to hear the applicant's reasoning on that. Um, I only had like a minor D, two sort of minor questions about, um. The, the prod, the proposal, I noticed, uh, on, there's a plan to put in a, a new gas furnace on the second floor. Um. Is there a particular reason, um, to put in another gas appliance rather than, uh, you know, an electric appliance? Was that considered? Was that, were those, is that alternative considered?
I actually have a lot of questions, county of Sumatelle, uh. They are already used electric, it's no gas allowed. So I don't know what this city of Millbrae, are there, are you guys adopting the, the new regulation, no gas allow for the, uh. Any major addition or, uh, new residents? So. We have to meet the code, so if the city adopt the, uh. No gas allow for the appliance, now we have to meet the regulation.
Yeah, I, I understand. I, I, I don't think it's in the code, but I just thought I would ask. Um, and then the other, uh, thing that jumped out to me, um, was that the, uh. Uh, one of the things, uh, that you mentioned in the application was the, the, the toilets flushing one point two eight gallons per flush. It seems like you could get to install more efficient, uh. Toilets that, like, I just Googled it, it's one gallons. I'm no expert on toilets by any means, but I just thought I would, again, I thought I would ask, you know, there's. Like, uh, Commissioner Wong said, you know, there's opportunities to make, uh. Our homes more environment, uh, more modern and sustainable, and those were the two thing. This is the other thing that I thought could be achieved. Uh, but yeah, that's, uh, that's, uh, that, that, that's all of my comments.
Thank you. Um, I'll just say a couple of things, um. The rendering was a disappointment. I'm glad to hear it was completely like wrong to scale and whatnot because it didn't look right. Um, moving forward, I hope we can, um, remind applicants that that color rendering is a hugely important piece of what we get. You know, picture speaks a thousand words and all, so, um, if we could make sure that those are a little bit more accurate, that would be super duper helpful. Um, of the things I've heard. Um, I'm okay with the design. I know it's a big house, but if you look at the drawings. It looks lovely and it me, meets every design requirement, so can't find a reason to say no there. I'm not as bothered by the porch as Chris is, um. I, I just, I'm not, I, I kind of see the point, but I, I think the porch is okay. If it's just a place to sit outside, have a cup of coffee. You know, I mean, I can be in my alleyway all day long next to my neighbor and, you know, I mean, our kitchens are only ten feet apart, so. This little porch is at least that far apart from their neighbor. Um, looking at my other notes here. If you want to make those bedroom windows on that one bedroom higher, that's okay. Um. Yeah, the, the, the garages at the back of the property, right? So we will have quite a long driveway for off-street parking, so that can help alleviate any concerns about parking. I think that's it for me. Do we have a motion? Oh, was that, did you raise your hand Kathy or is that leftover? Sorry, yes, please, you go.
Um. Uh, yeah, I, I loved all the comments from everybody, um. So with all of the comments, um, I make a motion that we. Uh, approve the project, uh, and adopt the resolution. To allow a first and second story addition to a single-family residence located at eight sixty-three Pinion. Avenue based on the findings for approval and attachment one, and subject to the conditions of approval in attachment. One, exhibit A.
I'll make a, for clarification on the motion. Does the motion include, uh, comments, uh, from Commissioner Del Negro regarding, um?
Uh, yes, it, it, it should absolutely include the comments, but we're not. Making it mandatory, so, um. For Chris, who is making those comments, um, do you want staff to work with the applicant? Or are you willing to go with the motion as is?
I personally, um, need to see some modifications to the home. Um, I feel that this is a dramatic impact on the neighbor next to it. I don't buy the lack of privacy arguments considering the trees, the windows and the door and the porch. Um, I'm highly concerned about the neighbor and their protest to this because of the impact on them. And the shadow at forty-eight percent during part of the year. I mean, these aren't, I, I know we, we say that they're small, but they're not. These are very large impacts, in my opinion. Um, so, um, I personally will need to see some modifications, um. But, um, that kind of depends on the rest of the commission.
Okay, then I'm gonna amend my motion a little bit to ask that staff work with the applicant. Um, to refine some of these comments that have been brought forth.
And, and to further clarify, uh, that's the window sill heights on the second story, bedroom windows, the, the tree, um. From deciduous to an evergreen tree to provide year-round, um, uh, privacy, um. And, um. And, and just work with staff on the landscape plan. And, and Commissioner Del Negro also did have, have a concern about the.
The ingress egress, I'm not having a problem with on that side. Having a door there, I get it, not a big deal. I'm more worried about the porch and the proximity to somebody's bedroom. Um, it's again, it just comes down to the porch. It's not actually having a door.
But a sliding door rather than swinging.
It's fine, as long as you're not stepping out onto a porch and it's going down into cement and you're at ground level, that's a different thing.
Okay, so the motion has been amended, can we just scratch that one or? Can we just?
I would, I would suggest for clarification, just to, um.
Amendment.
Just amend it and, and state the, the.
So then basically, it's all been said. Um, it's easy to follow up on it, that staff work with the applicant. Uh, I, in, in order to find to some of these little issues that we found.
And that, that's the, the porch, the, the window heights on second story and, and the, um. The, the landscape plan. Sorry, just wanted to, just for the, just.
Well, there's been a lot said, so I totally agree with you, absolutely.
Can I request clarification on the porch? Like, uh, what, what, what is the, um, or a recommendation on the porch?
Well, maybe we should ask the applicant if they're willing to put in a door without a porch. And use the ground.
We're gonna change the, uh, two window into a one sliding door without porch, just step down, uh, step down to the ground.
That, to me, is satisfactory. You're no longer at elevation, um, next to a fence in somebody's bedroom, I think.
And the, the, the second story, the pri- pri- primary bedroom three, we're gonna change to a high window.
Okay, and this, and for the stairwell as well?
And for the stairwell as well.
Three reclusive windows. That, that's satisfactory to me.
Right.
Absolutely, thank you.
I suggest also that, uh, you know, given the timeliness of this project and it's been on the books since January twenty-one, that, uh. Make sure that, uh, they have priority with the city staff to get this finished off.
I know, that's one long time.
So.
Okay.
Oh, I may have a, we have a motion then.
Yes.
We have a motion, I'll second the emotion, the, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Chris.
Those modifications.
Alright, can we have a vote?
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes five zero.
Congratulations to the applicants and just as a reminder, there is a ten-day appeal period. Alright, congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on, where'd my agenda go? New business nomination and election of a vice chair. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate somebody. Um, and I'd like to apologize, last week I actually forgot that, Alan, that you were, um, in seniority of, of, of the rise into. Um, the, the possibility of being the co-chair, um, and so I'd like to nominate you, um, for the position.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Kathy? You have your hand raised?
I do, and I'll second it.
Okay. Can we have a vote?
Yes, Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
And Chair Davis?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Alan. Alrighty, staff updates.
Uh, so the next, uh, planning commission meeting scheduled for August fifteenth, that, uh, meeting will need to be rescheduled, um. To another, uh, to a special meeting, um. And, and it's probably, it's due to staff working with the applicant on, um. And it's probably, it's due to staff working with the applicant on, for the refinements on a project. And just also another update on the project that was approved by the commission. It's at nine, five, nine, you know, real the former office depot site. That project was appealed in the appeal period last month. And subsequent to that, before the, the scheduling the item for the city council meeting on the appeal, the appeal was withdrawn. So the action of the planning commission stands. And the applicant requested the staff forward an email expressing their thanks for, for working on this project. And that should be forwarded to all the commissioners. With regards to the general plan update, the public review draft of the general plan document and the downtown and all community real specific plan is available for review. Also, the EIR for that document is out for public review. The end, end of that review period or comment period is August 29. So if anybody has any questions or comments on the plans or the environmental document for the specific plan or general plan, please email planning@ci.milbury.ca.us. On that topic, the city will also be conducting an outreach event in August. Towards the end of the month, a date is still being still being finalized. More information will be given to the planning commissioners as it approaches, but it's just going to be an outreach event on the general plan update and its progress and kind of introducing the community to the different elements and also the environmental document as well. See. The, lastly, there's an opportunity for planning commission, planning commissioner training in October, which is can be here locally in San Antonio County. We will be, Chrissy will be forwarding you information on that. So we recommend and advise all the planning commissioners to attend that training. And we will, I don't have the exact dates right now. Let me see if I San Antonio County.
October the 7th, I believe, Roscoe.
October 7th?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, October 7th. So we'll, we'll forward you information on that. And Chrissy will register you also. So keep an eye out for, for that. And that is the update I have for now.
Thank you. Kathy, do you have a question?
I do. I'm sorry. I, I missed her. The August 15th is being moved. Did you give us the date or no?
We'll coordinate with you into just to seek quorum. We haven't, have, we don't have a date yet.
Okay.
Proposed date yet, but we'll reach out.
Okay.
All righty. Next up is Commissioner comments or announcements. Does anybody have anything?
I had more and more question. So the Roscoe, you mentioned there was a, a general plan outreach event. What can you remind, I, I, I did not hear the date for that. When would it be?
That's because I didn't provide one. We're still finalizing that. We should have that finalized actually this week.
Okay.
So by the, yeah, by the end of the, of the week, we'll have the date finalized. It's going to be the tentatively around the end of the month. So the week of the 22nd around there. But we'll post it on the general plan website, the city's website, and we'll send out an email to all the planning commissioners by the end of the week.
Thank you. Alan?
Yes, just to like to announce that there's a Millbrae community gathering at the Millbrae Rec Center on Thursday, five o'clock. Sponsored by the Millbrae Cultural Committee. Guests will include City Manager Tom Williams and Sheriff, of course, Christina Corpus to share information about the city and the administration. If you'd like to attend, then you'll need to go online, Google Millbrae Cultural Committee and make an RSVP for this Thursday at five o'clock.
Thank you. Videos? Nathan?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to thank the city council for this opportunity to serve on the planning commission and the members of the community who, who helped advise me and supported me, sent supportive message to the council. I really look forward to serving on this body with you all over the next four years and working with planning staff. So thank you very much. I'm very excited to be here.
Thank you. Welcome. Chris?
Well, first of all, I want to say welcome aboard to Nathan. Fantastic to have you onboard. I guess I wanted to mention, obviously we know that August is upon us. It is currently August 1st. We have some events in the city this month that people should remember. One is we have the Milbury Machines on August 20th. There's the Beats and Brews on the 18th. And I think there's actually a history walk on the 14th, if I'm not mistaken. I think that was, some of those were exciting to go do a history walk through Millbrae.
Thank you. Good reminders. Okay, I only have one thing to add then too. Millbrae has launched a new way to communicate with its residents, and that is the Simplicity Act, app, sorry, Simplicity App. We have lots of different ways to do it, but it's another way. And it can provide notifications to you when there's something new, like a Facebook notification or Instagram notification. It would remind you to go check and say, oh, what's it, what's happening? So we'll probably have these things popping up and so it's another way to keep yourself informed because it's important. You know, when we hear you know, people say, I didn't know what was happening. You know, some of, we have to take some responsibility to find out and it's another way to do it. So I'm happy the city has done that. Thank you.
Can I also remind people that school starts next week for Mills High School? We're already upon us. And of course, shortly thereafter, the grammar school start. So do be aware, there're going to be kids back on streets, walking to and from schools. Be safe, please. Get ready for traffic changes.
All right. That was a lot of good reminders. That it? All right. Thanks, everybody. See you sometime in the future, not the 15th.
Not the 15th. Good night, everyone. And
Thank you.
Congratulations to the Commissioner Alan Wong and to Nathan Chan.